Good evening and welcome to the April 26, 2021 meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, please dial 1-408-650-3123 and enter access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, this is Doreen Goodrich, Chair of the Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Barthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter? Mr. Carpenter is absent. Mr. Wren?
Yes.
Mr. Wren is present. Vice Chairman LaLiberty?
Yes.
Chairman LaLiberty is present. Town officials and employees participating when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town manager Julie Jacobson?
Yes.
Assistant Town Manager and CFO Ed Kazanovich?
Yes.
Administrative Assistant Sharon Kwiatkowski?
Yes.
Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television and also note that each vote taking at this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Moving on with our agenda, we have no public hearings or presentations. Under Communications, we do have a letter in our packet from the Town Planner regarding the Planning Board Public Hearings and Recommendations on the Zoning Bylaw Amendments of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles 28 and 29. And as members are aware, our role is to send these articles to the Planning Board to hold a public hearing in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, 40A, Section 5, to review the proposed zoning amendments. The Board did take a vote on both of these articles by a 5 to 0 vote to recommend approval on both articles, which we will be looking at a little further along in our agenda. The next item we have are Board of Selectmen general items, and we do have interviews for candidates for the Finance Committee and a potential vote on appointment. Members enclosed in your packets were applications for the Finance Committee and the Board's policy on the interview process. Both vacancies expire on June 30, 2021. Per our policy, applicants were sent three questions to review prior to our meeting. So tonight, I will ask each applicant the three questions that were sent to them. I will ask the Chairman of the Finance Committee if she has any questions for the applicants or if she wanted to say anything, that is Ms. Anne Kavanagh. And then I'll open it up to Board members who can ask two additional questions of the candidates. So we do have four, and please just confirm that you're present when I call your name. Diane Byrne?
Yes.
Diane Byrne is here on a call. Erica Eichler? I see her. Erica, can you hear us? We can't hear you.
There's the green mic too.
Try it again. Try it again. Erica, can you say something? No, you're muted again. Unmute. I can see. Okay, you're unmuted. Try to. No, we can't hear you. You may have to call in. Can you look at the information and call in, or do you need me to repeat it? I don't know what you're saying. And I have Patrick Jones?
Present.
Present, and Kara Ann Westerman?
Yeah.
So Erica, we're unable still to hear you, so you may consider logging off and logging back on or checking your, not just the go-to-meeting volume, but your computer volume, but we can't hear anything you're saying. I can see your lips moving, but we can't hear you. So you may consider logging on and logging back off and then also calling in so we can hear you. Erica, do you want to start saying something before I move on?
Through the chair, if I may, if Erica can hear, I'm not sure. I want to send her a message through chat to tell her what you just said, and maybe she'll see it through chat, okay?
All righty, thank you. In fairness, all candidates, I am, because I know that Erica is on the call. I'm going to wait for a minute to see if we can get her logged in so that everyone is on the call and hearing the questions at the same time. Erica, can you shake your head yes or no if you saw the message in chat? With everyone's indulgence, I am going to just wait for a minute for Erica to come back onto the call. Julie, has she responded to you?
Through the chair. She has not responded yet. I'm just sending her a second one, just in case. And this one, I'm providing her the phone number and the access code. Well, it's on the agenda. I didn't know if she had it in front of her, so I just thought I'd try it one more time.
And thank you, everyone, for your patience. I know that she was on the call. So in fairness to her, I want to give her the opportunity to sign back on.
Actually, I was able to get the first chat to her, but the second one... Oh, John also sent the same thing. I didn't get the second one off before she logged off, so the second one didn't go in. But it looks like someone is calling in now, so that would be her.
Erica, can you hear us?
Hello?
Okay, you're on. So Erica, we saw you briefly, so now we'll listen to you. So I'm going to begin the questions. And what I'll do, and I know that all of you were sent these questions in advance, so I am going to go in alphabetical order. And the first question that I'm going to ask is, what is your interest in serving on the Finance Committee? And I'm going to ask Diane Byrne to go first, please.
Sure. So my family and I have lived in Auburn for 17 years, and I've always wanted to be involved in some way, but busy raising kids and working full-time. So now that my youngest daughter has graduated from the high school itself, it was time that I could really offer up some experience and be able to participate and make a valuable contribution to a committee such as the Finance Committee.
Excellent, thank you. Erica Eichler, the same question. What is your interest in serving on the Finance Committee?
I will say, first and foremost, it would be where I am today. This wonderful town, not only did I grow up here and live now where my children are being raised, but also business that started here in town. I think that it's important that when a community gives to you, after all the years of being special community, it's time to give back. And for it financially as best I can. I know time is one of the most important things that you should give, and some people can't, and I have the ability to do so, and therefore I think...
Thank you. And Mr. Patrick Jones, what is your interest in serving on the Finance Committee?
Thank you. I have had the privilege of living and residing in Auburn for over 25 years, and I feel the same way you can't take from a community, you have to give. But my interest at this particular time is because I know you have some senior finance staff. You've got COVID. You've got a lot of challenges with the budget. There are local receipts that are down. So I've got to think that the Director of the Finance Committee, the Finance Team, probably has a tall order in. If I look out over the horizon, I think I've got a strong background, including being on the Finance Committee before. And I think that I could still be and continue to be of value. So I sort of looked onto the horizon at Auburn and said, you know, the next few years are going to be pretty challenging. I'd like to be able to be a part of it again.
Thank you. And Kara Ann Westerman, same question. What is your interest in serving on the Finance Committee?
First of all, thank you for having me. Again, kind of similar to what the other candidates had said. I'm a lifelong resident in the town. I grew up in the town. I graduated from Auburn High School in '99. My kids are both in Auburn Public Schools, 8th grade, going to the high school. And I feel that I have the ability to give to the Board a different aspect. Currently, right now, I'm in Directory of Special Education, and I work directly with the school budget. And I think that being involved with the school budget and knowing about finances and different departments, I think that I would have a skill set that I could help give the Board. I write grants. I also oversee the Life Skills, Inc. I'm on the Executive Board. Actually, it's a Department of Mental Health. It's adult rehab and residential. Actually, we have one of the properties in Auburn on Hampton Street. So we are part of Life Skills, Inc. And I oversee their budget with the Executive Board. They have a $17 million budget. And it's nice to be able to help and see what areas need to be closed, see what the needs are of the company. And again, being a special education administrator, I work with the municipalities, FinCom, Board of Selectmen, especially during the budget season right now.
Thank you. And so the second question, I am going to go in reverse order. I know Kara, you were just up, but just to give other people an opportunity to go first, I am going to ask you, and I think you've touched on some of this in your opening. The second question for all of you, and I'll begin with Kara Ann Westerman, is do you have any special experience or skills that will enhance your appointment?
I did kind of mention before, school budget. I'm in charge of a $2.3 million budget for the Town of Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District. I'm on the Executive Board of Life Skills, Inc., Webster, nonprofit organization where I oversee with the Board a $17 million budget. From the special ed point of view, I know, very familiar with the difficulties that towns have in trying to meet the needs financially. And I'd like to be able to help with that, trying to see different ways to reallocate or looking at different views on how we can do what's right for the town and be able to not only give to the schools, but all of the other town departments.
Thank you. Patrick Jones, same question, but I'll repeat it. Do you have any special experiences or skills that will enhance your appointment? And, excuse me, Mr. Jones, before you begin, I just want to point out, members, that you do have each of the applicant's resumes in your packet. If you don't have them with you tonight, please let me know if there's any information that you want off of those. Mr. Jones, please go ahead.
Sure. I disclosed my resume only has my business card, but I'm currently the Finance Director and Treasurer for the City of Marlborough, overseeing a budget of $170 million. I oversee the Assessors' Office, the Treasury Office, as well as the Cloakroom Office. I'm bonded, and this is a new venture for me. But I think my prior experience as a volunteer, it's been over 20 years since I was on the Finance Committee under Robert Recor, but he was a good leader, and he appointed us to various committees. One of the things that I learned back then that's sort of stayed with my career is that when new revenue streams come into, or new expenditures want to come into town, they really should have a revenue stream. And so part of what I'd like to do is, I know with COVID coming up and several things that Auburn, like so many other places, are facing, is I want to make sure that the tax dollars are well spent, that the Board of Selectmen are well-informed. I realize that this Board is not just a decision-making Board, but a leader, and that the Selectmen really have to understand and that the position here is to support the Director of the Finance Committee as well as the Board of Selectmen. So my primary purpose is to be able to utilize and take a lot of experience and really just keep. You know, Marlborough has a great rating. It's very strong financially. There's money in the stabilization fund. I have a full understanding of where it stands financially, and I just feel like that's an important piece of knowledge to have and to keep that support in place and to make some very, very conscious decisions about how moving forward we would do that.
Thank you. And we're going to go back to Erica Eichler. I'll repeat the question. Do you have any special experiences or skills that will enhance your appointment?
Hi. In addition to my knowledge background, I have an education and bachelor's degree in management. In addition to that, I also own a company here in town, Media Realty. We have grown 600% over the past six months, even during the COVID crisis pandemic. So in addition to that, I'm very familiar, running and being the CEO of business in town. I understand what it's like to handle a line item budget. I understand how to future forecast and financial forecasting. I do ongoing variance analysis every day, every week, and I understand all of that. While I haven't worked with cherry sheets as of yet, I do understand the basics of such. And what's important in spending money isn't necessarily spending it, but understanding what the return on investment is with the spending of the money. So just because there's money to spend doesn't necessarily mean it can be spent on just anything. You have to think about what the return on investment will be once you spend that money. And I think that's an important thing to think about because while it's a town that we're discussing, a town in itself is a business, and it's important to understand that business has to figure out how to keep those line items balanced, make sure that there's enough money coming in to continue spending.
Thank you. And next, we have Diane Byrne, who's also going to answer this question. Do you have any special experiences or skills that will enhance your appointment?
Sure. So I have previous board experience as the Treasurer for EF International Foundation, which had a $10 million budget. I worked there for, give or take, about 10 years in different roles. I also am currently the Director of Finance and Operations for Fay School in Southborough, where I am the liaison between our Board of Trustees, Finance Committee, Facilities Committee, and Investment Committee. So it gives me the opportunity to have my hands in all of the different areas where this particular Finance Committee for the town would be with regard to the financial operations, strategic oversight, and decision-making, and in regards to both the revenues, the expenses, the long-term planning for capital expenditures in the town. I've got experience with both tax and taxable, excuse me, bond offerings and also have experience in building really strong relationships with the members of our town in Southborough, where I work, working with all the departments in the town, including the Selectmen and the Finance Committee, working together whenever the town needs something. We at Fay like to step up and work in partnership with them. So that's my role there, is liaison between the town. I have 25 to 30 years' experience in financial oversight, budgeting, financial planning, and reporting, monitoring, working diligently on internal controls and analysis. I really see the role of any Finance Committee is to work together, to look at the strategic vision of the town, and really take all things into consideration, not just the financial aspect, but the whole operation, and make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire town.
Thank you. And the last question, which is a pretty basic question, but very, very important when it comes to an appointment on the Finance Committee. And I will go in reverse order now. So Diane will be up next. The question is, do you have any time constraints that would affect your attendance at scheduled meetings and/or any additional meetings as needed?
None that I can anticipate, no.
Eichler?
No, ma'am. I have experience with meetings. I have been on the Energy Committee here in town since 2015. In this vast amount of time, I've... This would be, yeah, most important for me in making sure that I am in attendance at all meetings.
Thank you. Patrick Jones?
I do not, and I think that if you didn't take that into consideration before you sent your resume in, then that's a no-no. But I know in the past that could have happened. But I know my budget year, I know your budget goes to town meeting on May 4. Our budget doesn't hit City Council until late May, June. So your budget cycle is a quarter ahead of ours. So I'm fine.
Thank you. And Kara Ann Westerman?
I have no time restraints, and I also served on the Auburn Building Committee for the middle school, which I do not miss any meetings for.
Thank you. So next, I'm going to turn to the Finance Committee Chair, Anne Kavanagh, and ask her if she wants to ask any questions of the four candidates. And I would ask, if you ask a question, you ask it of all four or if you want to say anything about the Finance Committee. Mrs. Kavanagh?
Thank you, Doreen. I don't have any questions for the candidates, but I wanted to talk a little about what being a Finance Committee member entails. Let's see, I added up our number of meetings. Last year, we had 10 meetings. This year, 2021, we're already at six. So we'll have more than 10 meetings this year, probably. Our meetings are on Wednesdays at 7:00. We seldom work past 9:00 PM. The meetings are clustered around preparing the warrant and the budget for the annual town meeting in May. I believe it's the first Tuesday in May. And then we always meet one or two times or several times prior to the special town meeting in October. Our other meetings during the year don't include anything to do with a warrant or budget per se, but we do look at transfers that departments request, interdepartmental transfers and transfers from our reserve funds that are requested by departments. So I can't emphasize too much that attendance is very important. If we don't have enough members at our meeting, if we don't have a farm, we can't conduct any business, and that's a challenge. We want to make sure we have enough members at the meeting. Of course, right now, our meetings are virtual, but I'm assuming pretty soon we'll be able to meet in person in the Selectmen's meeting room. Anyone who, anybody who will be appointed to the Committee will get a digital copy of the Finance Committee Members Handbook. I believe it's a state publication. So you'll have a general idea of what we're going to be doing in the meetings. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'm going to turn to Board members to ask Board members if they have any questions. I'm first going to turn to Mr. Wren, then Mr. Barthium, then Mr. LaLiberty. I would ask you to ask your question of all candidates. And once you pose your question, I will go by alphabetical order for the candidates to answer the question. Mr. Wren, do you have questions?
I do. Just one comment and then a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, thank you to everybody. We've got some really great candidates here. This is some good stuff. In particular, a lot of municipal finance experience too, which I like to see. My question, I've struggled if I wasn't even going to ask the question today. I was kind of going back and forth on it. But this matter will come across your desks as a Finance Committee member, and the town, people in the community, will be asking questions, I think, of this matter. So my question to you is, how would you view your role as Finance Committee Member in regard to the possible public safety complex?
So just to repeat the question, Mr. Wren has asked, correct me if I have this incorrect. What do you feel your role is as a Finance Committee member in the upcoming proposed public safety complex?
That's correct.
Okay. Diane Byrne, I'm going to ask you first.
Sure. So as a Finance Committee Member, I would think that the first thing we would want to do is make sure that we have a good, solid budget for that and make sure that we have contracts that we have in place and we're transparent in all of our doing, all of our business dealings. If someone were to ask me in town if I think that was what your question was, I think that that's the answer. The answer is that we are putting together the proposal. We're bringing it forward to the town for a vote. We have financing in place if necessary. And we also have a long-range plan with regard to the use for the facility and how we would support that facility financially and budgetarily.
Erica Eichler, you're next. Do you need me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. I would have to agree with the previous statement that, first of all, it's definitely the most important aspect of the town. We need to make sure that we have a proper public safety complex. I think it's a great thing that we're working on. I think it'll change a lot, and I really think it's just a great idea, and it's going to bring a lot to the town. That being said, if the money is there and we're able to do it feasibly without stretching out the budget too much, using what we have in grants and other funding, I think we should definitely do. I do know that a lot of the funding that comes in is dedicated to this type of development, and so it's not much else it can be used for. And so anything that, as much as we can use for, we manage. I think that it's just an important change.
Thank you. And Patrick Jones, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have an understanding of it. I think I look at this in two ways. First, I'd have to really listen to the question because if the citizen is asking me the question really negative, I'd probably have to tread lightly and try to gain some confidence so that possibly, when I did give them feedback, that they'd be listening. Because we all know that there are probably some people very for it and very against it. So how it's asked is going to probably weigh way in whether I... it, so how it's asked is going to probably weigh, weigh in whether I can give them a very brief answer, or I have to sit them down for some coffee. The bigger question I would probably want to look at is all the nature of the borrowing, and by that I mean that you can do notes, you can do bands, you can do bonds, but we have long-range planning, and then you have a CIP budget, and then you don't get to your operating budget till later. And what you have to understand is that if there's interest payments that are going against the debt service, those interest payments are going to go into your operating budget. So as you borrow, you've got short-term and long-term, and you just want to make sure that if you're going to move that interest payment, that's going to come up against that, into that operating budget, that you've got the room in your operating budget, and I sense, based on, you know, what I've seen on the DLS for Auburn, it's very healthy, it sets services well within the capacity of the major budget that it needs to be, but those are things that you want to take into account, and you know, it doesn't hurt to educate the citizen on the whole concept of how a budget really works and interrelates, and why it's important. You know, I don't know that it's really my job as a Finance Committee member to really explain to them what the role of the selectmen and other departments will do. This whole venture is going to be a group of people, but I would see my position, if they approached me as a Finance Committee member, to just try to get them to understand the process as much as possible, and give them the facts that I should, but maybe not over, you know, not overdo it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kara Ann Westerman, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, thank you. Obviously, I, the public safety complex is something that we need. Obviously, a big part of the finance, finances in the town are emergency personnel. As far as having the financing in place, obviously, that's paramount to the process, but I think also a big part of it is sustainability. Will we be able to sustain the finance and keep the, the complex running, and be able to take care of the other town departments?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's it.
Did you have something else?
No, just, just sustainability.
All right, I didn't want to interrupt you, thank you. So, Mr. Wren, did you have anything else?
That's it for me, thanks guys.
Thank you. Mr. Barthium, did you have any questions for the applicants?
No, Madam Chair, I did not. I don't have any at this time.
Thank you. Vice Chairman LaLiberty, do you have any questions for the applicants?
Yes, I have one for everyone, and looking at everyone's application, I think you were all said that you would be interested in serving on another committee if you weren't picked for finance, which is really good to see, because, you know, we need as many people volunteering as we can. I was just wondering if you've given any thought to any other committees that you might be willing to serve on, if you weren't selected for finance.
So I'm going to, to go in backwards order again, and the question is, if not selected as for appointment to the Finance Committee, what other committee would you consider serving on? I'll first go to Kara Ann Westerman.
That would be based on availability, what, what town boards were open, and depending on my experience and ability to be able to have the knowledge base to be on a specific board, so I would, I would have to say, I really don't know at this point, depending on what vacancies were open, but I would absolutely apply for a different board. I'm invested in this town.
Thank you. Patrick Jones.
I actually follow suit with Kara. I'm not sure what's available at the moment. There is one board that I pursued in the past, but it doesn't seem to ever have a vacancy, and it's the board that really sort of involves a lot of the DBW background, so you know, when they come by for yard waste pickup and those things, and I can't remember exactly what board that falls in, but you know, there's usually at any point over the last 15 years that I've applied or looked on, like, and actually, you know, I was online when I saw this opening, and I was looking at a couple of other boards, and they're not posted. So I have to somewhat agree with Kara, the first speaker, you know, it'd be great to show interest in something else, but I don't always know that there's an opening at the time when there's a fit.
Great, thank you. Erica Eiker.
As stated before, I am currently Chair of the Energy Committee here in town. I am always looking to expand my reach. The reason why I found out about this position is because I was actually on the Auburn Guide website, looking to see what opportunities were available to expand my support here in town. That's how I discovered this seat. I did see there was one on Planning Board as well. However, I do feel that my position as a business owner in town, specifically in real estate, might conflict with that, so that was not one that I went for, and I thought that, given my background and my expansive knowledge and experience in the finance world, I thought that the Finance Committee would be the best use of my time as of now. That's not to say I wouldn't join another one in the future, it's just this is where I went for now. But yes, I would be definitely open to other opportunities.
Great, thank you. And Diane Byrne.
Sure, so the other committee that I would be really interested in serving on is the Council on Aging. It's something that I have a passion for. I have had several family members living in elderly housing in different towns, and really feel that it's so important that we take care of people who are elders in town, and really provide them with the services that they need, so I'd be very interested in serving on a committee that helped with that.
Great, thank you. And so I wasn't sure if I would ask a question tonight, but I have to say, we have four very impressive candidates tonight with, with strong financial backgrounds, so, so I am going to ask my question. This is, as many of you know, this is my, I've elected not to run for reelection, and this is my second-to-last meeting tonight, but one of the things that I am most proud of is, for the last 10 years, we have not gone to the two-and-a-half that we are allowed to go to annually, and still provide incredible services to the town. So my question, and I believe we're going to start with Diane Byrne, my question would be, what budgetary ideas and concepts would you consider in maintaining the town's financial stability?
Well, that's a great question. I think I would have to have a really good, solid understanding of the budget of the town in order to properly answer that, but what I would say is that, you know, we always want to be fiduciaries of the fund, of any funds, and we want to make sure that we're making decisions that not just meet short-term goals, but meet the long-term goals of the town, so it's really a kind of a combination of working in the Finance Committee as well as with the board, the, the town selectmen, in trying to determine the strategic plans for the, the future of the town, and then taking those plans and creating a solid foundation of a solid budget, and being able to protect, protect, excuse me, project into the future what those, what the needs are going to be in order to sustain those goals and, and plans.
Great, thank you. Erica Eiker, same question.
Are we discussing free cash at the end of the fiscal year?
Just, just maintaining the town's financial stability. As you, I, I think you're probably very aware that we haven't gone to the, to the allowed two-and-a-half in 10 years, so, so we get great audits, great reviews annually, and still haven't gone to the two-and-a-half while, while providing excellent services. So I just wondered what your ideas and concepts would be in maintaining the town's financial stability?
This is going to sound very biased, but I think that we need to invest more in our commercial market. The reason, given the commercial effect of things here in town pays for a lot of the funding that we need here, that takes a lot of the burden off the residential taxpayers. I'd like to see a little bit more put into bringing in more economic development here in town, supporting the business owners, whether it be large business owners or small like myself. I would like to see a little bit more put into that, because I think over long-term, that's what's going to keep our property taxes down, and I think over, over time, that would be the best use of the funds. That being said, they, you know, bring it down to the last dollar, because obviously, maintain anything in case of an emergency, we always need emergency funds, but I, I would like to see more funds put into that, only because of, like I said, I think it's 60-40, commercial versus residential tax input into our budget, so that's where I think that it alleviates that stress off the residents, I think that would be the idea.
Great, thank you. And Patrick Jones, same question, do you need me to repeat it?
I'm good, thank you. I believe that the long-range plan would be, the long-range revenue expenditure plan would have to be followed very closely. You wouldn't, you would know what was going to be four, six years out. You should be planning for that, and you should be following that. As a result of that, I think there are some areas that fluctuate. I know with COVID, local receipts really dropped, and you have to think, at what percentage are those dropping? You're right, Auburn has got a very high rating, its borrowing ability is incredible, it doesn't mean that we have to, or go to the levy limit, or use the tax levy. At the end of the day, I think it's on a great plan. I would like to see that plan continue.
Thank you. And Kara Ann Westerman, do you need me to repeat the question?
Please. First of all, thank you for serving for the town for the past 10 years.
It's actually been 12.
Wow.
12. It's just, we, we haven't gone to the, to the, to the two-and-a-half or 10, but yeah, I'm finishing up my fourth term. Thank you so much for acknowledging that. I've put my heart and soul into it, as you know. Anyway. What budgetary ideas and concepts would you consider in maintaining the town's financial stability?
Collaboration with all departments, and all members of the boards, but for me, when I look at our budget, and, you know, we have to look at cutting things and making things fit to work, I always like to do a needs analysis. What is the paramount need? What do we need right now? And kind of work from there. With, and I'm big about sustainability, you have the best plan in the world, but there's no finances to back that, you know, that's not going to work. So collaboration, to be able to work together, to come up with different ways and avenues to, to get to that vision of the town, to, to be able to make those ends meet for the betterment of the town, and the resident.
Thank you. So that concludes the questioning portion of our interviews. So now, and you don't have to, but I'm, I'm going to open it up to each applicant to just make a brief, try to keep it under one-minute, closing statement, just to touch on anything that we may not have asked, or you may not have had an opportunity to, to say, so in keeping this way I've asked the previous questions, I'm going to turn to Kara Ann Westerman and ask if you have a closing.
Sure, I, I want to thank everyone for their time tonight, and all the candidates, because they are all great candidates. What I will say is, in addition to special education budget, I also, as a director, I oversee the nursing department, guidance department, and ESL department. So within that, I still have to manage the budget lines, making sure that we're staying within those budget lines. So it's not just two-school budget, so I do have different areas that I have worked in, and I'm actually very familiar with working with the Finance Committee, being with this, you know, as a director, we have to meet with Board of Selectmen and FinCom to be able to, you know, justify our budget and what we need, and how much the town can support us, and how much aid they can give us, so I think that I have the knowledge to be a member of the board.
Great, thank you. Next I'll move to Patrick Jones.
Sure, thank you, and I also want to thank my peers, as well as all the selectmen for taking interest in my resume. I think we've got a great group of candidates. It's great to see this skill set coming in Auburn. I wanted to leave you on a personal note, because I feel that this is all question and answer, and I want to, I want to try to separate myself from the pack. I was a senior manager for 17 years in a company that I went from being the assistant controller to a senior manager, and I, unfortunately, when COVID reared its head last January, I had the president of the company decide that a couple of years earlier, he was going to shorten his plan to sell his company, and we had to posture the company to sell it. So I had the unfortunate task last March and April, not only addressing COVID, but to get rid of my whole department, and then I started June on my downward slope to close out my position and outsource my whole job, so that the company could meet its requirements to be good in a couple of years when the owner goes to sell it. And then amidst all of this, I had to go and I had to find new employment, and I expanded my search from the private sector, and I took the experience I had in the public sector, and I was fortunate to land a finance director position in the city of Marlboro. I just want to leave you with the fact that I've been at all components, I've got a long history of strong finance, I've crossed four industries, alls I've ever tried to do is do my best and be as good as I could. So I just want you to think that there are some really tough decisions that I know the Finance Committee has had to make, will make, and will continue to make, and I feel I'm a person who's had a lot of that experience and can deliver it in the best polished and professional way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Eiker.
Again, like, I thank everyone for their time. This has been such a pleasure to meet with all of you and to be even considered for this position. Very honored to have the opportunity to interview. Like the others, I think we can all say that we all have the knowledge and experience that it takes to fulfill this position. I think what's also most important that we have to think about is trust within the community, and one thing I definitely have within the community is trust. My name is well-known in town, I am linked to very many community organizations and charities. I'm seen at community events, and everyone recognizes me by, by name, and I think it's important that when we're talking about budgeting and utilizing the town's money, it's important to have that trust in addition to the experience and the knowledge, and that is definitely one thing that I have. I'm the one that supports a large portion of the community events in town, the organizations, the charities, and all the youth sports teams, not only my business, but I myself as well, in addition to having children in the school system, one that just graduated. So I think that's an important thing to think about, that it's not just about the knowledge and the experience, but also the trust, and I can definitely bring that with all the pro bono and, and work that I've done here. It's just, that's definitely one thing that, that I bring to the table, I feel like.
Great, thanks so much. And Diane Byrne, your, your closing statement. Diane, are you there?
Yeah, sorry, hi. I was on mute. So I also want to thank the committee for your time and your consideration, and the other candidates too. Although we haven't been able to meet in person, it's been a pleasure to listen to you this evening and hear your commitment to the town, which is really impressive. So just in closing, I just want to express that my interest really is to use the experience that I've had in my more than 25 years of finance and in operations, to really benefit a town that my husband and I have raised our girls in, and that we've really grown to love. We're not lifelong residents, but we certainly intend to be here for the rest of our lives. We are very strong in our church here in town, and really feel that we want to make a difference, and I wanted to wait till the time was right that I, so I could make the commitment to the town and, and not really have any agenda, other than to just come and say, how can I help, and what can I do, and take some of that experience and, and help the town to grow. And that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time this evening.
Great, thank you. So, so thank you, everyone. I mean, this is, this has been eye-opening, and I so appreciate the four of you going through this interview process. Everyone brings a certain unique set of skills to this, a different life experience, and we're fortunate to have all four of you step up and want to serve. I'm now, first I'm going to turn to the town manager, who, I'm speaking to my board members right now, I'm going to turn to the town members right now. I'm going to turn to the town manager. On each application, you'll see that, um, they've provided which precinct that they are from. And with the exception of Mr. Jones being from precinct two, our other-
I believe I'm precinct two, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought I did, but it's, sorry.
The other three candidates are precinct one. Um, we do have a, a bylaw regarding the appointment to the finance committee, which was sent to each member, but I'm going to, um, first turn it to the town manager to talk about the appointment. But what I want to say before I turn it to the town manager is, um, we have some impressive resumes here. We have four very impressive candidates. I know that Mr. Carpenter is not here this evening. Um, so we have, we, I just want to put it out there as options and then we can discuss it as a board. Tonight, um, we can make two full appointments to the board. We can hold it. I can let members look at their notes that they scribbled, as I did, um, listening to the candidates, or possibly watch it in replay. Mr. Carpenter would have the opportunity to see it in replay, or we can just move forward with making appointments tonight. But, um, I am going to turn it over to the town manager to talk about where we are at with fulfilling at least our efforts to, um, have a fair representation of the town and an equal member through, um, the five precincts. Mrs. Jacobson.
Uh, through the chair to the board members, and thank you very much. And also to the candidates, thank you for your application. Uh, it's, it's great to see such interest in town boards and, and commissions, uh, as, as I know a number of, I believe Mr. LaLiberty mentioned and other board members, it's, it's hard, especially during a global pandemic, to encourage people to step forward and participate because everybody has so much that they're doing. They're working from home, they're balancing children and family. So anyway, I just, uh, I want to echo what all the board members said. It's just great to see such strong candidates tonight. So there are, as far as the process goes, as Mrs. Goodrich pointed out, uh, under the town's general bylaws, chapter five, under the finance committee, uh, there, the statement says that the Board of Selectmen shall make reasonable effort to ensure that each precinct of the town is represented by at least one member on the finance committee. So we had an at-large seat that became vacant approximately a year ago. And at that time, we began to advertise the at-large seat. We, uh, didn't get any candidates for that seat until probably about three months ago. Uh, I want to say around February, we received a candidate. Within about a week or two of receiving that application, we had another finance committee member resign prior to her term being completed. She was precinct four. So both the at-large seat and the precinct four seat have terms that expire June 30th, 2021. So this June. So we have advertised the at-large seat for over a year. We've advertised, at this point, I'm going to say it's been probably going on three months, advertising the precinct four seat. We didn't, as you just said, Mrs. Goodrich, we didn't get any candidates from precinct four. Uh, so we do have three from precinct one and one from precinct two. Uh, according to the bylaws, the board has to make reasonable efforts. I think you've done that. I think you've advertised. I, we've, we've done a lot of promoting of these seats to try to encourage candidates. And at this point, you don't have any candidates from precinct four. We also looked back on the current makeup of the finance committee to see if any current members of the finance committee could be shifted into the precinct four, which would then create two at-large seats. But there are no cand, there are no current members. So the current makeup of the finance committee is one at-large seat. So there are seven members, two are vacant right now. So there are remaining five, you have one at-large, and then you have one member each from precinct one, precinct two, precinct three, and precinct five. So again, no one from four, not for, no, the reason we're not getting applicants, uh, to, to bring to you tonight. So the four applicants, uh, here, your, your options could be, and probably at this point should be to appoint, uh, to, to try to fill the two vacant seats, recognizing that you're not going to have anyone from, uh, precinct four. Uh, so I think that hopefully that covers what you were asking me to, uh, present through the chair.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now I'm going to open it up to board. Questions, comments? Are there any? Mr. Ren.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair to the town manager, can we, for one of the seats at least, uh, shorten it to a shorter term, say a one-year term, in the hopes to reopen this up to precinct four next year? Or is that something that wouldn't be on the table?
Uh, through the chair, it's a great question. It, it sounds like it might be a good option, but, uh, I'm looking right now at the language in the bylaw, the general bylaw, and the general bylaw is specific that the Board of Selectmen shall appoint two members annually for a term of three years each. So I don't believe the bylaw gives you the option of reducing that term to one year. But I think the only option you would have if you were hoping to continue to advertise and maybe get someone from, from precinct four was to fill the precinct four, to, to appoint somebody tonight only through June 30th, uh, and then see if you get any applicants between now and June 30th. That, that you really don't have the option beyond that. And I, I'm not saying that's a good option. It's not, but that is probably the only option you have for a shorter term, is to just fulfill the existing length on that term.
Yeah, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be fair to any of these folks here for a month term.
Right.
So LaLiberty, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that I would be in favor of holding off until Mr. Carpenter's here and we have a full board, provided no other members would be, um, missing at our next meeting. And, uh, also to point out that we also have to redistrict soon anyway with precincts. So, uh, I don't think it's too much of a concern. We definitely tried to get someone from precinct four and weren't able to. Um, I think we had four great applicants, uh, who just didn't happen to be from, from precinct four. Uh, and again, since we're going to redistrict soon anyway, um, I, I don't think it's, should be too much of a concern to, to try to appoint one of, um, one of these people to, to that term.
So I'm going to turn to Mr. Berthium, who has unmuted himself.
Yeah, I, I just want to, um, agree with both Mr. Ren and Mr. LaLiberty that, um, I don't think we need to, uh, I, I, I'm not opposed to waiting for Mr. Carpenter. I, I don't think we should entertain, uh, any other applications at this point. I think we have four great candidates here. Uh, the decision is already tough enough. And, um, so I have no problem waiting to, uh, a further meeting, um, to, uh, let Mr. Carpenter, um, speak his opinion as well. Um, but it doesn't bother me, uh, I don't think it would be a problem, um, that we don't have anybody from precinct four. And I think they had ample time if anybody from that precinct wanted to step up. So, uh, in all fairness to the four great candidates that we have tonight, um, I, I'd, I'd like to keep it to that. And, um, uh, if you want to move it, I would be, um, in agreement with that.
Thank you. Mr. Ren?
Uh, yes, one more question through the chair to, uh, Ms. Kavanaugh. Ms. Kavanaugh, this doesn't, if we were to hold off and allow Mr., uh, Mr. Carpenter, excuse me, uh, a chance to, to opine on the matter, would that impact your ability in future, in the, in the upcoming meeting? Or are you guys able to operate as, as standard?
Yeah, we should be able to operate as, as expected. We're going to have a short meeting before the annual town meeting, and then we might not meet again even for a month. So, um, we don't, the, um, the, the selection of the candidate doesn't have to happen tonight.
Thank you. So, um, so what I'm hearing is, um, from all three members, is that we'd like to, um, hold the appointment until the May 10th meeting. And so it sounds like I would need a motion to, to hold, to schedule a vote to appoint two members to the finance committee from the four candidates interviewed this evening for the three-year terms on the finance committee.
I'm sure I'll make that motion.
And so Mr. LaLiberty has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Berthium has made a second. Do we have any discussion or, um, comments under the motion to hold the appointment until the May 10th meeting?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Berthium.
Through you two, Ms. Kavanaugh. Um, would, she mentioned that, uh, after the meeting, she probably, they might not even meet for a month. So would we actually be, uh, taking a vote for, uh, the, the candidates that, uh, are appointed to start on July 1st? And how, would that be in effect of yours? Would, is, is that what you're looking for? Or would you be looking for somebody prior to that?
Um, well, I can't say with certainty that we won't have a meeting, um, before July 1st. We probably will. I can't say that with certainty that we will not. Um, it, I leave it up to you. That's a decision you can make. I don't, I don't need to decide. Um, as long as we have someone to, some people to fill those seats soon, that would be fine.
So, so, um, Mr. Berthium, I'll just follow up on that. I think it would be appropriate at our May 10th meeting to make a motion to appoint two candidates to, to finish the 2021, um, term and begin a three-year term on July 1st.
So that, so that would be, they'd definitely be getting a full term, uh, above and beyond the, the extra month or two.
Correct. It would be, it would be, yeah, it would be from May 10th to, 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 um, June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
And, and again, this is, um, you know, based on what type of motion is going to be made at our May 10th meeting. So if there's no further discussion, the motion is to, to schedule a vote to appoint two members to the finance committee to be, um, selected from the, um, pool of four candidates that interviewed this evening by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Vice Chairman LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And so, um, before we conclude this tonight, I, I honestly want to thank all four of you, um, for the interview tonight. Um, you've certainly given us a lot to think about. It'll be difficult appointments. Um, you are welcome to log on to our meeting on May 10th, but you are not required to because you've completed the interview process. Um, but please know that on May 10th, it's expected that we will appoint two, um, members to the finance committee and we thank all four of you. And, um, although we know that it's not going to be all four of you, we certainly hope that you'll continue to serve in other ways. Thank you so much, everyone. And you're welcome to log on, log off of this meeting now. We won't be offended if you don't want to listen to, to the rest of the meetings. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dory.
Good night, Anne.
Good night.
Okay, moving on, um, with our agenda, we have, under Board of Selectmen General Items, we have the May 4th, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Recommendations on the Warrant Articles. Before you, in your packet is the warrant. Um, we do not take a position on Article 1, so we are looking at taking positions on Articles 2 through, 34, is it? 2 through 34, 33. Um, so I will open it up to members to ask if you want me to go through each item and read the article, or what is the board's wishes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Berthium.
Um, I, I believe it's 2 through 31, um, is, is what I'm seeing. Um, and, uh, what I'd like to do is, uh, make a motion to, uh, recommend for approval, the warrant articles 2 through 31, um, and, uh, possibly second and open it up for discussion.
Okay, so Mr. Berthium has made a motion to, um, approve warrant articles 2 through 31. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
So, um, Mr. Berthium has made it, made a motion. Mr. Ren has seconded the motion under discussion. Mr. Berthium.
Um, so basically, uh, I, I just, I'm, I'm pretty much, uh, in favor of, of all of the articles. Um, but I would entertain, uh, if any of the other board members wanted to pull, uh, any particular article, uh, out of, um, you know, this motion, I would, I'd be happy to amend the motion at that time. Otherwise, otherwise we can just, uh, vote to, um, recommend for approval, all of the articles.
And we're still in discussion. Mr. LaLiberty, did you have something?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I just never unmuted.
Oh, that's okay. Does, um, uh, Mr. Ren, did you have anything?
Uh, no, I'm in agreement with, uh, Mr. Berthium.
Okay. So, um, so I too am, um, in agreement with, uh, Mr. Kasnovich.
So, um, I have no objection, uh, to Mr. Berthium's motion, although I would like to let the board know that at this time, there'll be a, probably a motion for Article 12 to postpone it to the fall town meeting. Cause that money is not available. We did put that out there in the event that the House numbers somehow gave us a, a better benefit than the governor's recommendation, although it does not. So at this time, we're going to suggest to postpone Article 12 to the fall town meeting.
And, um, thank you for that. And I'll just, I'll just comment on that specific article. And I appreciate the fact that it'll probably be postponed. But, um, personally, I, I, I plan on, um, voting in support of this because I want town meeting to know that, that we absolutely support what town administration has done in support of funding our OPEB liability. And I also just want to, um, because the motion has been made and seconded, um, I just need to get to it. I just want to, um, thank board members for voting to approve the articles, um, regarding the library project, the Goddard Park Library Project. I know that, um, that all of us are beginning to receive, you know, to have questions come to us about this project. And, um, it is a complex and complicated project, be it the, the Goddard Park, um, Bridge Library Project. While the road construction project is going on, there are good projects and, um, based on Mr. Berthium's, um, motion and the second by Mr. Ren, it appears that, you know, we're, we're in support of these articles. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank you for, um, supporting those. Is there any further discussion on Mr. Berthium's motion? Seeing none, by a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Vice Chairman LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. That was painless and easy. It wasn't it, Mr. Kasnovich? Uh, so, um, moving on, did you have anything else, Mrs. Jacobson or Mrs. Kasnovich, you wanted to talk about town meeting?
Through the chair, if I may, just, uh, to remind town meeting members, because we changed the time on this particular meeting to 6:00 PM, it's not at 7:00 PM. So just to remind the Board of Selectmen, as well as all participants at town meeting, that the meeting will be at 6:00 PM, uh, a week from tomorrow night on May 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see no gift acceptance in our packet. I see no proclamations or recognitions. Um, Mrs. Jacobson, I'm going to talk, turn to you, um, regarding the vote on the assignment of the donation, um, agreement. And first I'll remind members that they did receive an email with, with an updated agreement that had a lot of red ink through it. Although it was a lot of red ink, I think it was just a matter of updating a name, excuse me, a name throughout it. But, um, Mrs. Jacobson.
Uh, through the chair, thank you. And I want to acknowledge and recognize Attorney Robert Longden Jr., who's joined us this evening and sat through all the finance, uh, committee interviews as well. So thank you for being here, uh, Mr. Longden, Attorney Longden. Uh, Attorney Longden represents, uh, the, the Outfront Media LLC, which would be the donor in this case. So just to let the public know, and I know the board's been, uh, updated, but just to let the public know, the project that was initially approved for the billboards, uh, at that time was a prior company. It was called Total Outdoor LLC. And sometime early on in COVID, that company made the decision not to proceed with the project. I don't know if COVID was the reason or not, but it was right around the time of COVID. And we had brought to the Board of Selectmen a donation agreement a couple of years ago that the Board voted to support. And I just want to remind everyone, the donation agreement isn't something that we negotiate. It's a donation. And the company made the offer to donate a significant amount of money to the town. And we were very excited about that. The, the Regional Mall Overlay District Bylaw did pass Town Meeting. And the project with, any project that goes in there as a billboard will have to follow the Regional Mall Overlay District Bylaw. So we are very fortunate and pleased that Attorney Longden reached out to me to let me know that a new company plans to move forward with the exact same project that Total Outdoor was going to do. And this new company's name is Outfront Media LLC. And Outfront Media LLC will be building the billboards. Again, they have to be built, built within the bylaw. So you're going to see pretty much the same type of billboards because the bylaw controls what goes in there. It was very specific bylaw. And I can turn to Attorney Longden after I just give you a summary. But he can tell you that they're moving on all of their approvals. The only difference in the two projects is that Total Media, Total Outdoor was planning to build both structures. And I say structure, each billboard is a structure. And each structure has two sides. So you're talking a two-sided billboard, two of them. So there's four sides. They were going to build the two structures simultaneously. This new company, Outfront Media, will be building them probably about a year apart. They're going to build the first one, get it established, get their advertisers, see how it goes, and then build the second one, not building two at the same time, which makes, it makes sense to us as well. So the donation agreement that we have before you tonight that we're seeking a vote on is the exact same donation agreement. Not one word has been changed. None of the terms and conditions have been changed. Other than, as you saw, all the red strikeouts, we're changing the name from Total Outdoor LLC to Outfront Media LLC. That's the only change in the donation agreement. And just for the public to know, this is a voluntary donation. Again, it's not a negotiable thing. This is something the company gratefully came to the town with. And I'm just going to quickly give you the, the components. It's a $1 million donation over a period of 20 years, assuming both, both structures are built. The, there would be a payment upfront upon, 30 days after the billboard is operational. There would be a payment of $125,000 per structure. So they would be paying the first five years upfront. So basically, it's $12,500 per side. So when you think of it, it's $25,000 per billboard for a period of 20 years. Payable with the first five years upfront, within 30 days of that billboard being operational. So if the first billboard is operational this year, within 30 days of it being operational, we would get the first five-year payment lump sum of $125,000. Then when the second one became operational, you would get the second payment of $125,000. Thereafter, on the fifth year after each is operational, on the fifth year forward for the next 15 years, we would receive $25,000 per billboard or $12,500 per signed face for those that are operational for the remainder 15 years. The second part is that the town would receive use of the billboard, they call it space. We'd receive up to five hours per sign face per month. So that's, if four sign faces were available, that would be 20 hours. If two were available, that's 10 per month for both, for each structure. And just recognizing that if we don't use the, use the billboards for town events, town, town information, again, this is an emergency. That's a different situation, although obviously it can be used for an emergency. But this is just for town and municipal usage. The space would not be carried over to the next month. So if we don't use it, the next month, we start again. And then the last piece of this is that the RIM calls for honor before 30 days following the first payment given to the town. Outfront Media will provide the town with a freestanding four-by-eight-foot digital sign. And that will be completely donated to the town. It becomes the property of the town, and the town can use it for whatever town purposes it wants. And this agreement would stay in effect as long as the, until such time, and hopefully that wouldn't happen, the billboards were to cease operation, that would, that would negate the rest of the agreement. So with that said, through the Chair, if you don't mind, can I turn it to Attorney Longden to see if I summarized it correctly and if he has anything to add? And I just want to thank you and thank, thank Outfront Media for coming forward and taking over this project. I think it's really exciting. It's good for the mall. It's good for the town. And hopefully, we'll have a good partnership going forward with Outfront Media.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobson. And yes, I am going to turn it to Mr. Longden, Attorney Longden. And, but first, I just want to say, thank you for sitting through those interviews. We, we sometimes have unique issues that are before us. But certainly interviewing Finance Committee applicants was impressive. And I think that you saw what a great talent pool we have to select from and how proud we are of the town's financial stability. So I hope you found it interesting and eye-opening and know that we, we all work collaboratively. So, Mr. Longden, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I did find, it was very interesting to hear. And my wife is from Auburn. And I always tell her when I'm coming to Auburn for any business, and she always wishes me well. But it was very, it was very interesting. It was very, the people you have for seeking positions under Finance Committee should be very talented people, very committed to the, to the community, excellent skills, appears. And they look as though they are people who would work well collaboratively with the other members of the, of the town community. So I think, I think you're very fortunate to have people of that talent that are seeking to work for the community, contribute to the community the way they are. And as far as Mrs. Jacobson, she did a perfect job in terms of explaining a very unexcite, well, it's exciting, but it's dull language, as most legal documents are, as far as the proposed donation agreement. And she hit all of the, the major points that are in that agreement. The only thing I would mention and emphasize again is that these signs have to conform with all of the requirements of your zoning bylaw. And the zoning bylaw, the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to these signs was adopted at the Town Meeting, at which the town determined that they were going to permit signs of this type to be erected and operated within the zoning district, the mall district, and Regional Mall District. And so there's a, there's a coordination there between the zoning ordinance, zoning bylaw, excuse me, and what is being, what is set forth in your, in the proposed donation agreement. Because all of those provisions have to be complied with by the developer, by the, by the operating company for the signs. So I have nothing to add other than that. But if anyone has any questions with regard to this proposal of the town, I'd be happy to answer, answer them.
Thank you. Do members have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'll just make a quick comment. I just think it's a, I thought it was a wonderful thing back when, when it was first proposed. And I think it's a wonderful thing. Again, I think the signs are, you know, not, not to mention the donations that we're getting, but the signs, I think, are going to be a huge asset to our town and hopefully, a little bit of a boost to the Auburn Mall. And I just, I look forward to seeing them get up and, and local businesses advertising and people jumping off the, the pike that wouldn't normally drop, jump off the pike to, you know, spend their money in Auburn. And I'm super excited for these signs and, you know, hopefully, there, there may be other opportunities down the road. So thank you for everything that you guys have done. And I'm looking forward to this project getting started and completed.
Thank you, Mr. Wren.
Just, that was Mr. Berthew, just so you, just for the question. That's okay. No worries at all. It was Mr. Berthew.
Sorry, Mr. Berthew. My apologies.
No apologies. Anyone else? If there's nothing else, we need to take three votes this evening. If members have those votes in front of you, I will entertain a motion.
I don't have the notes in front of me.
I'm happy to read the motion. So the Chair, the, the, we need a motion to enter into the donation agreement with Outfront Media LLC. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Wren and a second by Mr. Berthew. Is there any discussion? By a roll call vote, Mr. Wren?
Yes.
Berthew?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you. The second vote would be to authorize the Town Manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the town. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Berthew and a second by Mr. Vice Chairman La Liberty. Any discussion? By a roll call vote, Mr. Wren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you. And the last vote would be to accept the donation under Chapter 44, Section 53A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Berthew and a second by Mr. Wren. Any discussion? By a roll call vote, Mr. Wren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you very much for waiting and thank you for the donation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, the members of the Board, for your vote tonight. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have Town Manager Items. The roadway improvement update, complete streets grant authorization for filing, acceptance and expending the grant funds. Mrs. Jacobson, I see Joanna is on the call also, but I'll turn it to you since it's a Town Manager item, and then you can turn it to Joanna.
Great. So we are excited. I'm going to have Joanna Paquin, who's our Assistant DPW Director and Sewer Superintendent, give you the details. But just want to remind the Board that you've supported us applying and putting in our whole application to be designated under the Complete Streets Program. And it gives us the opportunity to apply for various grant funding. So this is one of those opportunities. So Joanna, thanks for being here and explaining it.
So I, Julie, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to start with the, the list of streets that we had planned on resurfacing this year, or?
We're on the, we, we are on the grant application, so if you can address that first, and then we'll move on to the streets.
Okay. So the, the grant that we are looking to apply for is the Complete Streets Grant. The, the grant program, I think this started, I don't know, maybe four years ago. The Complete Streets Grant Program has three tiers. So Tier One is the actual policy. And the Board has voted on the policy, like I said, probably about four years ago. Then we moved on to Tier Two, and with the help of CMRPC, we developed a Complete Streets Prioritization Plan. And one of those, one of the items on the prioritization plan was the development of Goddard Park. And so at this time, we're looking for, for funding under the, the Tier Three, which is the, I mean, it's just basically construction, funding for, for the construction of these projects. And, and we're looking to kind of tie in everything that's kind of going on in that area, which is mostly the, the construction of a pedestrian bridge, which would cross over between the, the library and Goddard Park.
Joanna, if I may add, just so we're clarifying too. So as you know, we do have articles that are seeking funding through Town Meeting Approval for the overall library, Goddard Park pedestrian bridge project. And these grant funds, if received, would help us to offset the town contribution toward the bridge. If, if we don't get it, we are still seeking the funding for that whole project because we have another $500, $5,000 grant that is reliant on this. So this would actually be looking to help offset the town's, some of the town's portion of that bridge, as Joanna said, trying to keep everything in Drury Square tied together and keep with our long-term planning. So again, this would just be an offset to the town's share of the bridge project.
Great. Do members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding the grant authorization for filing, accepting and expending the grant funds?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we file for the grant, accept and expend the grant funds for which the, they're set out for.
So we have a motion and a second, a motion by Mr. Berthew, a second by Mr. Wren. Is there any discussion? By a roll call vote, Mr. Wren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the Chairman votes yes. Thank you. And Joanna, we do have the, in our packet, we do have the road reconstruction and resurfacing project. You don't need to read the whole thing. You can just give us a brief overview and, and hopefully tell us that this is going on the town's website so people can find it and know where their roads are. Go ahead.
So I, I wanted to present the, the list of roads. I'm not really, I don't know if you wanted me to list, go through the list of them.
You don't have to. We have it in the packet.
So there's, there's a few neighborhoods, like every year, where we try to group the, the roadways into neighborhoods just so that it's, it's a little bit, we get a little bit of better price from the contractor. And, and part of that, part of that list is Brotherton Way, which is, it's already under construction just because of the, the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program that we had, that we had received funding for. So we're looking to use Chapter 90 funds to continue that project and kind of, you know, bring it all together. And, yeah, and plan on putting the list on the town's site.
Thank you. And so I'll just say, you know, I truly appreciate the long, the long-range planning and long-term planning. Again, you know, this is what, about 12 years ago, the streets, the streets, the streets. And when you drive through Auburn, you know, you're really beginning to see the difference. And I thank you and Mr. Coyle for your hard work on this. Do members have any questions or comments? I don't see any. Thank you again, Joanna, for your hard work on this. And feel free to get off the call if you'd like, but you're always welcome to stay. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanna.
Thanks, Joanna.
Thank you.
The next item we have is from the Town Manager, just an update on the town's summer programs and events.
Through the Chair, yes, I notified the Board last week before we posted this, but just wanted to make it clear and just explain, because obviously there are questions in the community about this. So there are currently, despite, there's a lot of conversation nationally about whether masks are going to continue to be required, whether restrictions are going to be lifted. All of that, as of now and as of the time we need to make certain decisions, is, is just discussion. It has, it has not changed the current state of the Governor's orders that we're required to comply with. So we have met, myself and Ed have met with the Board of Health, our Public Health Director, our GPW Director, our Recreation and Culture Director, and review all of the current Governor's orders that apply to our events. And have determined that, given those orders as they stand today, we are unable to hold the Summer in the Park Concert Series or our Independence Day event. I would say that we are absolutely open if those restrictions are lifted or changed. I would say that we are absolutely open, if those restrictions are lifted or change, we're going to revisit this, but right now, we can't do it. And I know it's difficult, people want to get back to normal, but the fact is, we are still in a state of emergency, we're still in a global pandemic, things are getting better, but restrictions are still in place that as a, as a municipality, we're required to follow. And I'll just name a couple of them that apply specifically to the concerts. So we have to, you can't have more than 150 people at an outdoor event. Our concerts typically draw 300 people, and even if you have 150 people, they still have to be spaced six feet apart, which means we've been trying to work to calculate if they were family groups. Actually, Joanna and I, from the engineering perspective, looked at the Pappas complex and figured that at most, we're probably right around the 150 with the six-foot distancing. So the problem becomes enforcement, and you'd have to be turning people away, it's a public event, it's a free concert, and we just simply don't have the resources to either put tickets out there or monitor these things every single week and turn people away. That's a, it's a difficult thing to do. So right now, we're not able to have the concerts. If that restriction changes, if that number goes up, we can revisit it, but keep in mind, we have to start booking our concerts in January. So when people say that we're making a decision early, I can tell you, we're actually making this very late. We start booking these bands in January, and we have to pay most of them an upfront deposit of at least 50%. Some of them, you have to pay almost in full until the night of the event. So we didn't want to risk any town funds by reserving bands that we weren't sure back in January we were going to be able to have this summer. Again, we keep watching, we're waiting to see if anything gets lifted, we have to make the call now because these bands are calling and asking if we're ready to confirm with them, and we can't, we can't put town money towards something that we can't hold. So hopefully, if this gets lifted, we'll revisit it, maybe we get a half a season in, maybe we get the tail end of the season, maybe we have a couple of things in September. So we're absolutely willing to revisit this. The Independence Day event, absolutely, that's something we probably can't revisit, even if things were to change today. You have to have fireworks contract, vendor's contract, you have to get on the list for the state for the inspections for the fireworks, and I, nothing is telling us from the, from the state that those restrictions are going to be lifted to the point where we would be allowed to have a 10,000-person event. Right now, the governor's orders in Massachusetts prohibit festivals and parades, so we're not able to have that right now, it's a governor's order. So that probably won't be revisited this year, but hopefully the concerts will be. And likewise, the last thing that we announced was just the sponsoring of town sports. I want to be clear, that's not Little League, that's not the the independent soccer leagues, this is the town-sponsored sports. There were two. We had a town-sponsored soccer league and a town-sponsored basketball league. Basketball is considered high-risk right now by the state and the CDC, and most communities have not even put their hoops up, including Auburn, because of the high risk. If that gets eliminated and we no longer have to do that, we'll absolutely revisit this. Same thing with soccer, that's a moderate risk. Our insurance agent has recommended against sponsoring any moderate or high-risk activities right now from a liability perspective for the town. So right now, all those organizations that are private, not-for-profit, they can still continue to have their, to hold their events. They carry insurance, and when they book the fields, covered or not, they always have to provide insurance to the town for the use of those facilities. So the town's protected, and they're protected. So we are working with one of the leagues that we previously sponsored, and they're looking actually to see if they can either A, get insurance per our requirement from our insurance agent, or if they can join another league and go in under that league just for this year. And again, we're going to revisit all this. So we're, we're not taking over, we're not being overly cautious, I'll tell you that we are being in compliance with the regulations as they exist now. And again, we have to make these decisions months in advance because of the planning. We start planning Independence Day in January, literally, it takes six months of seven different departments planning. So we feel badly, too, this is something we love to do, but right now, we can't do it, and we promise you, we will, we will reassess if that opportunity comes up.
Thank you. Do members have any questions? Seeing none, did you have anything else, Mrs. Jacobson, for tonight?
No, I'm all set. I, I want to thank you all, thank you all for your support and tell you, we're, we're working hard every day on on our COVID issues, that's still, you know, we got to keep in mind, we are still in in a global pandemic, we still have restrictions here in Massachusetts, and we're all hoping that those restrictions, little by little, get lifted and we can get back to a sense of normalcy. But thankfully, we're able to continue to service the public, and just want to assure you, myself and Ed, as well as all the department heads, we meet several times a week to review all of the new compliance regulations, protocols, workplace safety, just to make sure we're doing everything that we're being required to do. And we assure you, we'll continue to do that, and we're all crossing our fingers that as more people get vaccinated, that we'll be able to see these restrictions get lifted from all of us. So thank you.
Thank you. Do members have any items that they didn't put on the agenda? Seeing none, we have the minutes of March 8, 2021. Are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, the chair will accept them as written. I just want to say, Sharon, as always, thank you for the excellent job on the minutes. I read through them, and you truly capture the meeting in words, so thank you. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, by a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thanks, all, good night.
Good night.